Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting of Wednesday, July 10th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Could you please call the roll?
Herzog.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Right.
Wyman.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
Duitt.
Here.
Thank you.
And now if you'd all stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Conrad, if you could read the land acknowledgement, please.
My pleasure. As we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'chuk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have storted this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of this land.
Thank you very much. And next, we have approval of the agenda. I do have four items that have been, would like to be pulled from the consent agenda: number six, number seven, number 11, and number 13.
Do we need a motion in a second?
Okay, I was going-
Can we do all four with the same motion in a second?
I believe so because it's all agenda-related.
All righty. And you have resolution six, resolution seven, resolution 11, and 13?
Yes.
Well, per request, I will make a motion to pull six, seven, 11, and 13.
And I will second that. Herzog. Okay. Call the roll.
Hess.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Duitt.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The President's Report this evening. As you can see, Dr. Davis is not here this morning, or this evening. Mrs. Conrad is here, sitting in for him. Dr. Davis is at a convention in Washington, DC. He has been selected to serve on the AASA, which is an Association for Superintendents. He is one of 135 that have been selected throughout the country. And he will be meeting with Senator Johnson and other dignitaries to talk about education in Wisconsin and to learn more about what some of the national trends are. So we're excited to hear what he comes back with. And that is my President's Report for this evening. District Administrator Supplemental Reports. Mr. Fox. Mr. Consadini.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Have some exciting updates here to share on behalf of the Oshkosh Area School District Administrative Team. Happy to be here tonight. So, work completed in the last 30 days. The area A, which is the two-story academic portion, has the second-floor casework installed. That was one of the last pieces in that area. Area B cafeteria terrazzo flooring installation is complete. Area D, the kindergarten first-grade wing of the building, painting in the classrooms and the hallways complete, and ceramic tile in the restrooms are also complete. On the exterior of the building, as I'm sure some of you have recognized, the fence coming down as of recently, there has been soil placed in the grassy areas, gravel graded to support the installation of the playground and the poured-in-place surface at the playground. And then concrete installation regarding sidewalks surrounding the playground is complete, as well as to the east entrances. Some photos to support that, starting in the upper-left. Area A collaboration, so this area is for the most part complete, awaiting for furniture installation, which is scheduled for the end of this month. Area A in the middle, what's labeled as the cross-cat room, is complete with the flooring, cabinetry, and sinks installed. The upper-right, this is a photo we've seen in various stages throughout this process. This is one of the five different reading nooks scattered throughout the building, also emphasizing some of the other architectural features that are seen throughout the building. In the lower left-hand corner, Area B, a classroom where you can see some of the carpet being installed, as well as some of the cabinetry, and waiting for technology to be mounted on the wall. Area B Gymnasium, complete there, where you can see the bleachers installed, finished floor, and the equipment in the gym ready for kids. In the bottom-right corner, the Area C Art Classroom, you can see that the flooring is complete, cabinetry is installed, and just waiting for some ceiling grid to be dropped in. On the outside of the building, you can see playground installed in the upper-left-hand corner. All of that is in and awaiting for the rubberized surface to be placed. In the middle top photo is the dumpster/generator enclosure. So, a little bit unique on this project. We worked with the city to enclose the generator in this location, so it would not be seen from the road. So, for access purposes, they would have to just crane things in and out if it had been 30 years when it needs to be replaced. But for the most part, you will not see the generator on this job. Upper-right-hand corner, you can see the parking lot with the stone down, all the curbs in, and starting to get some of the topsoil inside of that curving area. The bottom-left, you can see the monument sign being installed with all of the stone there, roofing in its place. Metal panel will go on, and then eventually the electronic message board centers will be placed as well. Bottom-right, main entrance in the visitor parking loop, you can start to see that the large hole up on the second floor is now filled in. The windows are all in at this point in time. You can see that they've got all the curb in, and the bio swell between the parking lot and the road is in and preparing for asphalt. And then the photo, which is in the bottom-right-hand corner, which is really the middle photo just turned, give or take 30 degrees, is a shot at the main school entry. So, that main sidewalk, as it comes off of Hazelright at the main entry, is in that spot. Projected work for the next 30 days. Area A through D is completion of all interior construction scope, which includes locker installation, blinds, completion of all flooring, all of the casework. And most of the casework remaining is in that kindergarten first-grade area on the southern side of the building. Terrazzo floor will be complete and the installation of the electrical main gear. Believe it or not, we are still experiencing hiccups from COVID. We think in 2024 that we're still, we're out of the hiccups associated to that. But electrical gear was ordered over 18 months ago, and we're here today as it's just passed through customs last week. So, it is on its way and will land in time for the building turnover in early August. Site concrete. Concrete installation is completed in all areas, will be completed in all areas of the project, including curb and gutter, parking lot asphalt, playground surface, fencing, light poles, and the completion of the retention basins. So, to support that, all the grading, landscaping, and plantings will also be installed over the next 30 days. All in all, the project will be done. So, very happy to report that the project is on time and on budget, and so happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have a date yet for the community open house?
Well, we're currently working on that, and we're anticipating the third weekend September is what we're targeting right now.
Okay.
More to come.
Good. That's marvelous.
Furniture is scheduled to be installed the last week of July and into the second week of August, and then staff will arrive, get settled in, and welcome students in early September.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Nihans, Budget Variance Update? Good evening.
The Budget Variance Report is for the month of June, at least from the data we have available to us at this point. At this time, the reports are going to be a little bit different from what they have been in the past. There is no forecasting that would be done at this point because we're trying to tie everything out. The fiscal year is now technically over. So, we're just trying to tie everything out. That typically takes a two-month period for us to get everything tied out, get our health plan all tied out. We don't even have our numbers yet for the health plan to be able to start doing the calculation. So, we typically work for the month of July and most of August with our auditors and with DPI to get all our DPI grant claims and all of our expenses truly tied out at that point. Right now, the operating funds that you have shown in the report are showing a surplus to date. Again, I would not anticipate that as we get to the end of the year. I would anticipate a slight deficit, if that. Fund 50 is showing a small deficit at this point. Again, there's still going to be some revenue that's going to come in. Just not sure right now what that's going to reconcile out with the summer food program as well. Fund 80 should be pretty close. Of the funds, that's probably going to be the one that's going to be the most accurate. That is showing quite a surplus in it for this year. But that is probably the fund that is going to be the closest to actual at this time. Again, one of the other notes on your software or the reports I give, we are changing out software companies in the business office. The company we've been using that allowed me to have lots of nice graphics, that company is a very expensive company to work with. They do have lots of nice graphics and reports that are available, but it comes at a cost. We are using in the business office, we're transitioning to another company that's going to be quite a bit less expensive and still going to be able to provide some graphics for the board, just not quite as many. And there is going to be a little bit of a lag in the months while we transition to this new company.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nihans?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Worker Compensation Quarterly Claims. Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Yes. So, this would be the fourth report for this school year because we report out in quarters. And just as Mr. Nihans stated, we closed out the fiscal year. So, coming in with the totals, we are currently at a mod rate of 1.01, and we will transition into our new mod rate later when all of the numbers come in. The district has a total of 134 workers' compensation claims through the fourth quarter, and that actually is the same as it was last year at this time at 134. There were three high-cost claims for the 23-24 school year that really impacted the total cost incurred. You can see that there is a difference between this year and last year in the numbers for the same time period, but once again, that's because of three high-cost claims. The number of claims for April through June was 16. The actual claim cost for fourth quarter was approximately $37,000. This is similar to the same time period last year. And as reported before, we've been reporting out incidents or claims where staff were being struck or injured by students. Six of the 20 incidents or claims for fourth quarter were related to staff injuries with students. And all six of those were in paraprofessional group. We are continuing to work on strategies for creating a culture of safety, and specifically when it comes to student-staff injuries. We are a little bit behind as it took a little bit longer for our equity audit and analysis to be conducted. We are just now getting in the findings from that report, and we'll be using those audit goals to help us put together professional development and training for next school year so that we can bring those incidents and claims to.
Questions?
Dr. Herzog? I have a couple of either questions or comments. We heard earlier this year during a listening session and during open public forum from a number of our paraprofessionals regarding the number of incidents and the seriousness of incidents regarding staff members being struck or injured by students. Under letter C, you note paraprofessional group reported six incidents. These are recorded, and the number is down when compared to previous quarters. I'm wondering, for the next board meeting, if you could share with us what those numbers are. To say that they're down really doesn't give us much information. Are they down from seven to six? Are they down from 10 to six? I think that's important. I think it's also important for us to know what remediation has taken place to ensure that we are reducing the number of incidents of staff being injured by students. That, to me, is really serious. And regardless of what the employee group is, but especially hearing from the paraprofessionals, I should say, last school year, the 23-24 school year, I would like a little bit more detail on that last point under C. When you say they're down, how much are they down? And what remediation are we implementing to ensure that these numbers continue to drop?
Yeah. And so, if you'd notice under D, where it says Strategies for Creating a Culture of Safety, that's exactly what we're doing as we're looking at the findings from the equity audit. That is going to tell us, especially in our special education classrooms and our special education department, what are the areas that we need to either train in or have improvements in order to reduce those incidents. So, those details will be coming, and we can absolutely put comparison numbers in for the next report.
Thank you. And then one other question I had was, if this is tied to one of the KPIs, do we rate ourselves a number of stars for this one?
We do, and I-
And how many stars?
Yes.
Can you share how many stars in the follow-up report and where we were before and where we are now, so we have some means of comparison?
Correct. And I believe we're at the same star rating, but I can't give you the star rating off the top of my head.
I don't need to know it tonight, but I'd like it at some future time. Thank you very much.
Sure. You would think we would be if we were at 134, and we're at 134.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Schmidt, Cybersecurity Quarterly Update.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So, again, for just a real quick update on our cybersecurity efforts, we continue to run our phishing campaigns. We're seeing a very high degree of success with that. I just actually reviewed our statistics earlier today, and we're below 2% for the past three months. So, that's really good. That means that we're effectively training and supporting our teachers in identifying and responding to these kinds of emails that they might be seeing. We are continuing to work through our process. We mentioned last time that we were in the process of updating our firewall. That equipment has been received, and we're in the process of configuring that. We've got a couple of months before we have to do the full changeover, and it's going to be a pretty disruptive change when that happens because we have to relearn all of the rules that we had in place that we didn't know why they were there before. So, we'll have a bit of a transition period with that. But that will, again, be something that's going to really increase our, lower our exposure and increase our posture towards incoming threats and opportunities for other people to kind of try and get at some of the valuable data and information that we have. The only other thing, then, that I would add to here is we have, we're in the process of adopting a tool that's going to allow us to run automatic audits of privacy policies and agreements that are in place for different tools that our teachers and students are going to be using. So, currently, we have a process in place, but it's very manual, and we don't, it's a time-consuming process for us to maintain all of these agreements. So, we're moving into the system that's going to allow us to have that process be a little bit smoother and a little more collaborative, to allow for more transparency and easier review of materials as they come in. So, more to come with that. And then also, finally, just my last point or last thing to highlight in here is we've gone through a self-evaluation of our, it involves all of our policies, but then also our practices and any materials or anything that we have in place. And then we did the self-evaluation. We have a third party also independently verifying those results. And if the board is interested, we could go over something in a closed session at a future meeting so that you can be updated on where we're at within that framework and kind of things that we have going forward that we might be using to look at in our strategic plan.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I did have one question. Do we also have a KPI tied to this one that we measure with a number of stars?
We do.
Okay. Where are we with our star rating?
We're at a five-star rating, and like it by a lot. So, to get to a five-star rating, we want 85% or better participation in our phishing training and 10% or less fish rate. We're sitting at a 1.8% fish rate, and we're sitting at a 98% training completion. So, as we're revising strategic plans, perhaps this might be an area where we could challenge ourselves a little bit and set some different goals. But yeah, we're very, very well past that five-star rating at this point.
Wonderful. That's great to hear. And I also like your idea of raising the bar. I know CISA 6 does that with their KPIs as well. So, thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I do not believe we have any other committee reports for this evening. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Marvelous. Non-agenda-related public forum. We have one speaker tonight, Jean Erdman. And this is for non-agenda-related. If you could state your name, and you know all the rules that go along with that.
My name is Jean Erdman, and I live at 415 South Meadow Street. Which, are we at the agenda?
Non-agenda.
Okay. Non-agenda items. I recently read a book by William Pink called "When," and I'm always interested in what else affects schooling besides teaching methods, because there are a lot of things that affect schooling. And it turns out that when you do things also affects the schooling and also affects test scores. And toward the, and taking breaks that are called restorative breaks also affects schooling and has been shown to affect test scores. One of the things that Oshkosh did, I'm not sure, but several years ago, is you got rid of afternoon recess in the elementary schools. And Pink presents all kinds of evidence for districts that have afternoon recess about its benefits, and I would like the district to look into it. I think that afternoon recess is very popular with kids, very popular with parents. And I know during the five years that I taught elementary school, I always thought that the class that I had right after recess just flew by because we were all refreshed. And so, it wasn't a learning loss in terms of time, it was actually a learning gain. So, that is something that I'm asking that the district look into. The second thing that I brought up about nine months ago was whether or not children in all of the schools are allowed to have water bottles at their desk and how many drinking fountains there are in the school. And it's a lot cheaper to let children have water bottles at their desk than to install new drinking fountains. So, it's water bottles at the desk that I'm most concerned about. And I actually would like to know whether all of the schools allow kids to have water bottles at their desk. I know factually that some of the schools do, and I just want to make sure that that all of the schools do because hydrating is, again, something that is good for children and I would say affects learning. That is the end.
Okay. Thank you. You can stay right up here. Moving into agenda-related public forum.
I thought that this would be in the agenda category because children's emotion and well-being is on the agenda tonight. I have an opportunity to spend a lot of time with a couple of five-year-olds. And in that experience, I was watching YouTube with this five-year-old and was really startled to find out the extent to which social media teaches children to be really downright naughty and to trick their parents and to fool their parents. And that's probably nothing new here. You probably already know that. But what I am suggesting is that as you look at the counseling curriculum and elementary, I know more about elementary, I'm speaking to elementary right now, but it could have implications for secondary, that you actually use some of the social media that's out there and show it to children and use that as the basis for your conversation. Because I think that kids know that this isn't good, but they watch it enough that it influences their behavior. And I think actually seeing the real thing will bring out a little bit of guilty smiles and, oh, yeah, yeah, I watched that, yeah, you know. And I think it's a powerful tool, and I'm not sure that it's made its way into the elementary curriculum. And it's easy to pull up, it doesn't require a purchase. So, I'm suggesting that you use the social media that's negatively influencing kids to talk to kids about it. So, and that would, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean.
We need to return to number two. We did not have the Annual Charter School Report. I guess I was looking for Dr. Coleman, didn't see Dr. Coleman. Is there some?
I haven't.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
So, going back to Annual Charter School Report, actually, this will be the last Annual Charter School Report for ALPS. The board's approval of the recommendation and subsequent resolution to allow for the transition of ALPS from a separate charter school to a program at Perry-Tipler Middle School will start for the 24-25 school year. We want to recognize the school's dedicated and passionate staff. We'll continue to foster an environment that encourages academic excellence, creativity, and a love for learning. A couple of highlights from this last year of the ALPS charter contract is that all of our ALPS teaching staff have maintained that high-quality educator status and have been attending and participating in numerous virtual conferences, as well as professional development. The goal for ALPS was 100% of the students completing state-designated assessments would perform at proficient or advanced. This year, 95% of ALPS were at proficient or advanced students in English, language arts, and 96% or 7% were proficient or advanced in the 2023 administration of the mathematics of the Ford exam. The other goal was that 80% of students will demonstrate a year or more of academic growth, and they are happy to report that 100% of students did demonstrate one year or more of growth. And then the very last goal, and wrapping up the last goal for the ALPS charter school, is all ALPS students will incorporate technology into their learning, and all ALPS students 100% utilize Chromebooks and other integrated technologies on a daily basis. So, that would conclude the last charter report.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
As an ALPS parent, I'd like to thank Dr. Coleman and the administration for setting up a meeting with ALPS parents and students to explain, you know, what the charter was and what the long-term vision for ALPS is. I thought that was really helpful. I like that they're creating some committees that are going to involve parents. And I think that the district is doing a great job with ALPS. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We are moving to workshops now, and this is Mr. Kemmer, Social, Academic, Emotional Behavior Screener.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, this is our annual report on SABERS, which is one of our key performance indicators. And it actually counts for 30% of our safe and healthy schools core area. So, as President Wyman mentioned, SABERS stands for Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener. So, this is something that we use across the district to really assess the social, emotional development of all of our students. So, this was the first year that we used the screen at the high school level. We've been using it for three years at the elementary and two years at the middle school. So, it's nice to really have this comprehensive dataset for the first year, K-12. So, there are two different versions of SABERS. There's the SABERS Rating Scale, which is completed by our teachers based on their observations of students. And then we have the My SABERS Rating Scale, which is based on student ratings of themselves. So, SABERS, the teacher rating, is done in grades K through 5. The student My SABERS ratings are done in grades 2 through 12. So, the district uses this data in a number of ways, but really, the sets that we're focusing on tonight are more district-wide data. Schools break this down in a number of different ways to really address student needs in their buildings. A little bit more about SABERS. It's done three times a year, so we have three benchmark periods, fall- It's done three times a year, so we have three benchmark periods, fall, winter, and spring. The assessment itself is nineteen to twenty questions, so depending on the version, it does differ a little bit. But it only takes a couple of minutes to administer, which is really nice. It's one of the benefits of this screener is that it doesn't take a whole lot of time. It's computer-based, so when we do it with our students, they're really in and out relatively quickly, so it doesn't take away a lot of instructional time. And then for our teachers at the elementary level, it only takes a minute or two per student. So when you're talking about twenty to thirty students, it's not an overwhelming amount of time to get through a class with this assessment. So in terms of the data that we get, SABERS breaks down our student population in three categories: high-risk, some-risk, and low-risk. And then it also looks at three different domains. There's a social domain, academic behavior domain, and then an emotional behavior domain. So students are scored in each of these areas, so in addition to the composite score, we can break it down and look and target these particular areas. There could be a student who may be low-risk in terms of their composite score, but yet they may have some risk or higher risk in one of these areas that we want to target and take a closer look at. In terms of why this matters, we've dedicated a lot of time and resources to social-emotional learning over the past several years. So as you know, at the elementary level, we use our Harmony curriculum. We continue to use PBIS and conscious discipline at the secondary level. We continue to use PBIS and restorative practices. So this data gives us an indication of the effectiveness of the things that we're doing, not only from a district level, but like I mentioned before, looking at individual schools and even classrooms to see whether or not the things that we're implementing are having the intended impact. So along with that, we use this data for individual students to identify potential interventions that we can provide. I know a lot of our elementary schools in particular use this data to identify students who may need Tier Two support, like check-in, check-out, or say groups. Then our counselors identify students for social-emotional groups using some of this data as well, but it can also be used for individualized interventions. We of course look at data trends and break that down by race, gender, and other factors. And then we compare this data to other data sources that are related. So behavior data, mental health data, it really helps provide a complete picture of where students are at in our district. So for this past year, we were at a key performance rating of three stars. This is where we were last year as well. And when we pull up our district profile, you'll see the fall, winter, and spring benchmark. In order to make that determination, we look at our most recent scores, and those of course come from spring. And we've also been using the My SABERS data to make that determination versus the SABERS data. And the reason for that is My SABERS provides a more complete profile for our district in that it goes 2 through 12, so it factors in elementary, middle, and high school, whereas SABERS right now is only at the elementary school. So both data sets are equally important. One of the things to note is that when you look between the SABERS and My SABERS data, what I usually do is I tend to focus in on the high-risk category. And the reason for that is because one of the ways to easily overwhelm our system is to have a large number, a large percentage of students in that high-risk category. Those tend to be the students that need the highest level of support, the most intensive resources. So if we have a higher percentage of students in that category than what we are anticipating, it can lead to us having a struggle to find the resources that are needed for those students. So one of the things that we've noticed is that our teacher scores tend to be a little bit higher in terms of the percentage of students who fall into that high-risk category. That was something we saw last year too. I don't know the exact reasons for that. I'm thinking one of the reasons that could be is that when you look at our grade-level data, which I will show here shortly, the students who tend to have the highest percentage in the high-risk category are students at the lowest grade levels, who have the greatest need for social-emotional development, so talking about kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. When you're talking about SABERS only being done at the elementary level, that could potentially inflate the high-risk category a little bit more, but there could be other reasons for that as well. When you look at our My SABERS data for this year, one of the positive things is we did hold steady in terms of our high-risk category at a relatively low percentage of 3%. Ideally, we'd like to see that be 0%, but the fact that we are paying in at a lower percentage, being 3%, I think is a relatively good thing. This slide shows our SABERS scores over the past several benchmark periods, so this goes back a couple of years. You'll see there's not a ton of variance from period to period. We did end spring with 6% of students in the high-risk category, 75% in the low-risk category. And again, this is based on teacher ratings at the elementary level only. And then comparing that to our My SABERS data, which is again, is our student ratings, again, you'll see it's relatively steady over time, but this year we were able to maintain 3% high-risk category. And then we did drop a little from winter to spring in terms of the low risk, going from 79% to 78%. But again, we're still solidly, solidly in the three-star range based on these scores. When you look at grade level, this is SABERS across the elementary school level. So again, you'll notice, like I said, if we're focusing on the high-risk category, you'll see that kindergarten, first grade, and second grade tend to be the highest across benchmark periods, and it tends to decrease a little bit more as students move through the system. And that's a trend that you'll notice in terms of My SABERS as well, where our second grade had the highest percentage of students in the high-risk category comparatively at the elementary level. And then going forward at the middle school level, you know, we're in the 3% to 4% range, and at the high school level, that drops even more. When we look at SABERS and break it down by gender, there's an interesting trend that we also noticed last year, and that's when you look at the difference in teacher ratings between males versus females, males tend to have a higher percentage in the high-risk category compared to females on the teacher ratings. But when you look at My SABERS, which is the student ratings, our male students tend to rate themselves a little bit more high in their social-emotional development compared to our female students. So what our teachers are seeing and what our students are experiencing isn't exactly aligning. It's just an interesting thing we noticed last year that continued this year. One of the other trends that we continue to notice is discrepancies by racial groups. So again, those discrepancies are more pronounced when you look at the SABERS or teacher ratings, where you see some of our students of color are scored in the double digits in terms of percentages for a high-risk category compared to our white students and our students who are Asian. And then when you look at My SABERS, again, it's a little bit more consistent in terms of that high-risk category across the different racial groups, but we do still have some small discrepancies there as well. So this is another data set that I pulled in, our out-of-school suspensions, just to help put in perspective some of the data that we just reviewed. So this goes back, looks at the past eight years for out-of-school suspensions. One of the positive things that you'll see is that we're trending downward in terms of our out-of-school suspensions over the past couple of years. You'll notice nineteen and twenty, twenty-one, we did drop, but those were our COVID years, so we had virtual learning for good chunks of both of those years, which accounts for the lower numbers. But you know, a sliver of good news is that we did have our lowest out-of-school suspension rate going back all the way to the 1617 school year. And then when you look across our different racial groups, we did continue to see drops over the past couple of years for most of our different racial groups as well. With that said, I did want to make sure that I continue to point out that we do experience, do continue to experience disproportionality among our students of color when we talk about out-of-school suspensions. So this slide here shows risk ratio, and this is a metric that I have talked about over the past several years. And this metric in particular compares our students in different racial groups to our students who are white, which is the majority of our student population. And it looks at students who are out-of-school suspended at least one or more times throughout the course of the school year. So the risk ratio gives us a little bit of a comparative analysis between those two groups. And the group that is most disproportionate in our district has traditionally been students who are black. And our risk ratio right now for that group, for this past year, was 3.3%, or was 3.3%. So what that is showing is that students who are black were 3.3 times as likely to receive one or more out-of-school suspensions compared to students who are white. That is a slight decrease from the year before, but again, it continues to show there is a rather large discrepancy there. There are also different ways to calculate risk ratios. DPI, for instance, in our federal joint notification, calculates risk ratio in a similar way, except rather than using white students as a comparative group, they use the total student population excluding the group that they're looking at. So that's one way to calculate it. I don't tend to use that calculation just because I don't think it, it ends up leading to a lower risk ratio, but I don't, I think it's a little bit misleading because you're including other groups of students of color who are also disproportionately impacted by out-of-school suspensions in that comparison group, if that makes sense. And then there are other measures when you look at out-of-school suspensions. Like I said, this measure here takes into account students who have been out-of-school suspended one or more times, so we're looking at students. When you look at total numbers of out-of-school suspensions, that's another way to look at our data, which also provides some useful information. But one thing to think about when you look at total numbers of suspensions is that it could include outliers, so that could include students within particular groups who have been out-of-school suspended, you know, a significant number of times compared to their peers. And like I said, that can be useful data too, but that would have to be something that you consider in interpreting that data. So for the sake of this presentation, I just included our risk ratio as shown here. In terms of celebrations for this year, I think, like I said, having the full data set across our system was really helpful, and it's something that we look forward to continuing to make comparisons to in future years. We held pretty steady in the high-risk category on My SABERS at that 3%. And like I said, we'd like to see that continue to decrease, but I think for this year, that was a success. And then we decreased our overall out-of-school suspensions to the lowest level since the 1617 school year. And then we had a slight decrease in our risk ratio for students who identify as black. Opportunities for improvement, the racial disparities that we're seeing, we need to continue to target, and that's something that we're going to continue to do through our equity plan, the work that is involved there. And then one thing I want to explore too is some additional support for our teachers who identify higher percentages of students in the high-risk category. So this would be our student, our teachers at the lower grade levels who are, you know, based on their ratings, seeing, you know, 6%, 7%, 8% of their students who are being rated in that high-risk category. What else we could potentially do for them to help provide some additional support. Then actions being taken, one of the things I'm really excited about is our Ashkosh Way Manual, which is going to be rolled out to staff to begin the school year. And that really provides a more consistent approach to social-emotional learning across our district for all of our staff. So it provides consistency and clear expectations. As a part of that, there is a big section that provides really what our philosophical approaches, and that's really tied to conscious discipline and restorative practices, which we've spent a lot of time and resources training our staff in over the past several years. But it also provides a more defined behavioral code system. So definitions along peering down our behavioral codes, that's going to provide more clear and consistent data for us as we continue to analyze and look for trends. And then finally, it's going to provide clearer guidance in terms of what are classroom-managed behaviors versus office-managed behaviors. So our teachers do a great job of managing behaviors, but there can be a pretty big variance in terms of what some students get sent down to the office for compared to others. So we just want to create more consistency in that area and make sure that if a student is going to miss instructional time, it's not something that could have been handled in the classroom and definitely needed that support from the office. One of the other things that we're really focusing on this year is changing our approach to social-emotional learning implementation. So a big part of that is going to involve our district leadership team. So one of the changes we're putting in place is going into this next year, every school in our district is going to be required to have a representative on our district leadership team. And what that's going to do is as we develop our 90-day plans for implementation as a district leadership team, those representatives are going to be able to take that plan back to their school and help their school teams implement what it is that we developed as a district leadership team. So there's that direct connection. And then we're going to have monthly follow-ups with members of that district leadership team just to see if there are any barriers that are in place that are preventing them from getting that plan implemented and trying to figure out what support we can offer to make things easier on our schools. So right now, we're in the process of developing a three-to-five-year plan. Once that's developed, we can kind of backtrack, and that'll help us identify what our focus is going to be for our first 90 days, so we can get that out to our principals and our staff. We're also going to continue training in the areas of, and coaching in the areas of conscious discipline and restorative practices. Those are methods that have been extremely valuable to our staff and our students. And then finally, we're going to continue the work that's involved with our equity plan to really continue to try to reduce the disproportionality that we're observing in our district.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you go back, I'll say four slides where you had the chart, go back two more. This, that one. Go forward one. With the 1,200 out-of-school suspensions, is that number of students or occurrences?
That's total number of suspensions.
Yes.
So.
How many kids is that?
I don't have that number. I have it on my computer, I don't have it with me right here.
I'd be interested in knowing the 22, 23, or the last three years. I'd like to know how many children it involves, not just occurrences.
I can definitely get that to you.
That'd be great, thank you. Mrs. Carroll.
At the State Education Convention this year, I went to a breakout session on a school that was incorporating mental health coping skills at the elementary level, such as practicing mindfulness and learning coping skills and practicing gratitude, like all that kind of stuff was just second nature for them. Are we doing anything like that? I know that in our health classes, we go over a lot of mental health kind of techniques and whatnot, but have we, do we think in the elementary school?
Yeah, so when you go into our classrooms, you'll see a lot of that, you know, a lot of brain breaks. And in fact, there's a lot of pieces, components of that involving our conscious discipline training. So it's something that teachers really need to understand, the mindset of students and the brain state that they're in. So in conscious discipline, we have three brain states. There's executive states and emotional state and then.
Survival.
Survival state. So just understanding those brain states, how to interact with students when they're in each of those brain states is really important, so. But yeah, that's something that we definitely want to focus on.
Awesome, thank you.
You want to go first?
You can go.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'm most interested in the new Ashkosh Way Manual that's going to come out in the fall, because I want to be forward-thinking on this stuff. So is the intent of the Ashkosh Way Manual to provide, is to provide guidelines, right, on if you do this, you're going to the office? If this type of behavior is managed in the classroom, right? So consistency is what I'm thinking, right? Or could you explain that a little bit, what the goal of the Ashkosh Way Manual will be?
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of pieces to it. Part of it is to provide that consistency there. There's always going to be some level of subjectiveness when it comes to behaviors because every behavior is different. But if we can help provide more guidelines for our staff, it becomes a little bit easier to navigate those situations when they arise. One of the other things that's really important that the manual does is it helps people kind of understand where we're going as a district, what our mindset should be when dealing with social-emotional learning or student behaviors. So we're all approaching it. So, we're all approaching it the same way. We all know our students have changed over the years. Our approach to social-emotional learning, our approach to discipline has really needed to change with that. So, we really need to make sure that teachers understand where we're going from best practice standpoint in terms of what's best for students in that, as we're investing a lot of time and energy and resources into things like conscious discipline and restorative practices, we really need to live by those things and model those things in our classroom in order for us to get the best outcomes for our students.
Thanks, because I'm not going to lie, maybe straightforward on this, I hear from a lot of, I don't know, a lot, if we can measure that or whatever, but I hear from people, you know, staff and parents that, and they'll tell me stories frequently about, I had this kid do this, and this kid got this punishment, but this other kid did the same thing, and they didn't get a consequence, you know what I mean? Or, this kid did this thing which was really bad, they went down to the office for five minutes, had a sucker and came back. You know what I mean? Another kid did the same thing and they were down there for a half an hour. So, it's worried me for a while, you know, because I think consistency on those types of things breeds trust in the system, and it allows people to be more, you know, comfortable with saying, hey, no. So, I'm, you know, I'm just, that thing, or the manual, Ashkosh Way Manual sparked my interest the most because that's new, and that's going to affect probably everyone, you know, in the district, kid-wise and teacher-wise, and that's a big deal. So, my follow-up question is, where did we gather input to put that Ashkosh Way Manual together, and what practices is it based on?
Yeah, so really, it's focused in on, like I mentioned, restorative practices, conscious discipline, PBIS. So, one of the things that we wanted to do with the Ashkosh Way Manual was really remove the names of things. I think sometimes people get too caught up is, well, is this, is this restorative practices or is this PBIS? Are we now doing conscious discipline? And really, what it comes down to is what's best practice and what's best for kids. And, when you look at the approaches that we put in the Ashkosh Way Manual, it is all those things, but we eliminate the name piece. This is just how we do business in the Ashkosh Area School District. So, really, it is based on the things that I mentioned. And, our district, SEA Leadership Team had a lot of input into that. Our principals had input into it. Our people service staff had input into it. And the thing about the Ashkosh Way Manual, that is going to be important for us to pass along to staff as well, is it is a living document. It is meant to continue to change and, you know, make adjustments to it over time. So, as we're moving along, if there are pieces or components that we want to add to the Ashkosh Way Manual or change, we can do that. It's not set in stone. But, like I said, I think it really gives us a good foundation in terms of how we're going to continue to build on what we've established so far with social-emotional learning in this region.
Okay, well, thank you.
Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I had several questions or things I was wondering about. The first one has to do with, you've provided district-wide data in terms of elementary, middle, and high. Do the individual schools get their school-by-school results so that if we've got a school that's in the four-star category as compared to the two-star category, the approach might be different in terms of working with the staff and the leadership of those buildings?
Yeah, yeah, that's a really good question. So, every school has access to their own data.
Okay.
And that, they can break that down by classroom, by different demographic areas as well within their building. So, they really do a lot of really cool things with that data to identify where we have needs for support.
Very good. And then, another question I had is related to the suspension data, which Mrs. Wyman was looking at. I don't think we've asked for in-school suspension data, but I think it would be important to look at that as well.
Sure.
Because we had a report earlier this summer from Mrs. Kiffmeyer on attendance and absenteeism. And I believe she noted that the absentees' numbers included kids who are suspended in and out of, in or out of school. And, we need to have kids in-school learning. So, I think it would be helpful to have in-school suspension data along with the out-of-school suspension data. And as Mrs. Wyman was saying, also, how many students are we looking at here? Can we zero in on those and do some interventions with specific students to reduce the number? So, that was one wondering. Another one was, we implemented, staff implemented this year, programs at Vell Phillips Middle School and North High School, which were sort of an intermediate step before suspension or before expulsion. Do you have, do you have any data on the effectiveness of those programs and what impact those might have on in- or out-of-school suspension data or on the my Sabers data from those students?
Yeah, so I don't have data with me.
Okay.
But, we have been tracking data on both of those programs throughout the course of the year. And it's likely that they contributed to some of the drop that we saw in out-of-school suspensions. I don't know to what degree they impacted that, but I think there are a lot of other things that factor into it as well. But, I can certainly get you more information on those two programs in particular, kind of outcomes that we saw from them this past year.
Thank you. And what about in-school suspension data?
Yeah, we can track that. The reason why we don't focus on in-school suspension data quite as much is because there's a bit more variance from school to school. So, some of our schools have in-school suspensions, some of them don't.
Okay.
Some of them, with out-of-school suspensions, it's very clear-cut. If you send a student home, they're out of school suspended. With some of our in-school suspensions, you know, if you have a student who is sitting in the office for a class period, some schools might count that as an in-school suspension, some might not.
Okay.
So, that's where we really have to clean up our data in terms of, this is how we define in-school suspension.
Sure.
And make sure it's done consistently.
Well, then that raises another, another wondering for me in terms of, these are the numbers of incidences of suspensions. And I believe under Wisconsin law, you can suspend up to five days for an incident.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, I think it would also be important to look at how many days students are being suspended out of school. And as Mr. Wright was suggesting, would that then perhaps show us differences between schools in terms of, Barb's going to be suspended out of school for five days because she was really bad, but he did the same thing and he got one day. So, those kinds of variances could be adapted or addressed through that Wisconsin-Ashkosh Way program that you were suggesting.
Yes.
But, I think it's important to look at, excuse me, also the number of days. Do we really need to be suspending some kids for five days? Might one day be just as effective.
Right.
Because we have a lot of parents who, and I'm not making excuses for kids, I'm not trying to lower the bar, but we have a lot of parents in, who are single-parent families where we suspend a kid out of school, and that can have an implication for the livelihood of that parent, and potentially, they could lose their jobs. I hear about that.
Yeah.
From people. So, we have to be cognizant of the implications and the impact of what we're doing with those out-of-school suspensions, but not lower the bar and not push things under the rug that truly need to be addressed.
Agreed. And we've really focused in on instructional minutes in particular and the importance of having students in their seats for as many instructional minutes as possible. So, really thinking about what's the purpose of sending a student home. We know from research that out-of-school suspensions don't really have a positive impact on overall behavior, and it can be counterproductive in that way. So, really challenging our staff to think about, you know, what is the appropriate consequence in some of these situations? Not only whether or not to suspend a student, but like, as you mentioned, how many days that student is going to be out.
Okay, and then two other quick thoughts. I know we have some of the hardest-working teachers in the state of Wisconsin, I am truly convinced of that. For three years, we've been at level three stars. I would, I think we should be able to move that and get us up to four. And hopefully, your actions will lead to that. And I, because the, first of all, the data are pretty consistent. We're not losing ground, but we're not gaining ground either as a system. And then, on the risk ratios, I'd really like to see those risk ratios be reduced. And perhaps, the action plans you're talking about and collaborating with Mr. Miller on the district's equity plan will help do that, because, again, that's a topic I hear in the community, and it also comes back to the Ashkosh Way Manual that you were talking about, the consistency in how discipline is applied and how maybe one teacher is tougher on students generally, or maybe boy, male students versus female students. And so, we want to eliminate those kinds of unintended consequences or biases.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Oh, here you go. Well, just, I'll put this out in advance. When we get this data again, I am going to specifically be asking about consistency, how effective this new manual was, how adaptable we were to getting input to try to make it better, because I truly think that being inconsistent in these areas can erode schools, and it can erode confidence, and it can erode confidence from staff members. Because the amount of parents I've heard from saying that this kid did this, this behavior, you know, we didn't, weren't consistent, you know, like across all lines, fairness, consistency, I'm going to be asked, I'm going to be following this specific item closely. So...
Yeah, I appreciate that. And one thing I will say is that, you know, I hear similar comments from parents or teachers about, you know, differences and consequences that are applied. I just want to put in a word of caution that it's important that we don't make assumptions in those situations about what students are receiving, because in a lot of cases, we don't, as people who are making those statements, they don't know what's actually happening. So, there could be a lot more that's happening that they don't know about. From a confidentiality standpoint, we can never tell parents or, in some instances, teachers, the consequences that certain students receive, so...
And I totally, I totally get that.
Yeah.
But where my frustration comes from is from what I'm hearing from staff, that we lack consistency. And I take that as a lot more credible source. So, no, I appreciate all that, and I get that, yeah.
Dr. Helsch.
I've got a couple wonderings and comments that I'd like to share with this sort of stuff. First, I think you talked about the my Sabers data and talked about, you know, it seems like at grade two and three, you had a higher percentage. I'm wondering, have you looked at the publisher's data? Because I'm just thinking about the my Sabers is, that's the student taking it, right?
Right.
And, the challenge of coming up with a consistent measurement tool for somebody in eighth grade or 10th grade versus a two, or second grader, you know, to think that that is somehow aligned throughout all of them, that maybe that variation is just due to challenges with coming up with a measurement tool that's going to create equality across the board. I don't think I could think of a way to make that happen, but maybe the publisher did. And so, I think, I just suggest maybe go look at that, and then, that may tell you, maybe that's not a concern to think about that.
Okay.
Where I struggle is, like, when I look at this data here, I think consistently, when I see all of this data, what I struggle with oftentimes is how we characterize the things that we are seeing. And specifically, like, in this report, we do have the celebrations. And in this case, I look at this and I go, I know that's a statistically significant reduction. And when you can say that, that means we've done something substantially meaningful, and absolutely, we should be throwing that up as a celebration. What I struggle with is, like, if we go to page 20 of this report, so two more pages, and we look at the risk ratios, and you go from the black 3.6 in 2022 to 2023, down to 3.3, well, that's, that could well just be due to random variation, and I'm going, I struggle with then turning around and writing it as a celebration. I know technically, you can say that went down. But honestly, if you see a risk ratio above 1.5, that's an astronomical risk ratio. And so, you're saying, holy cows, we're bad here, but oh, we're celebrating that we went down a little bit, and I struggle with that immensely. So, I just, I hope we can better craft our interpretation of some of the data that we're seeing. And I'm not, I'm not trying to call you out on this particular report, but it's kind of across the board, there's many times when we see that sort of thing. And then, finally, I think you and I talked about this sort of data and the distinctions between the different ways that you can calculate it. And I do hope that we are, you know, that this is the ratio of rates by students in the numerator, where you could calculate it by the number of actual incidences in the numerator. And my fear is that if, if we're making the question of, is there potential discrimination or something going on in this district? My fear is that I suspect if it is happening, I don't believe that our community is a community that encourages that sort of discrimination, and it's probably only happening in single sorts of incidences throughout the district or single individuals that are causes of that. And so, if a single child has five or six suspensions, I want to identify that. I want to be able to see that, and presenting the data like this diminishes that. And so, I, you know, I appreciate Dr. Herzog's call for more data, but at the same time, I also appreciate you presented a whole slew of data. And so, I just hope that you guys are looking at it all the different ways, because I do feel like if you measure it the other way, there are things that you could identify in that sort of analysis that this could potentially hide, not that we're trying to hide things, but it could not come out because we're doing it this way. I just want to appreciate that the way you choose to do the calculations can substantially change the interpretation of what we're trying to say, and hopefully, we are looking at it at all sorts of ways. I appreciate all the information you gave me very much, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? Thank you. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. Board's first backcourt material on each, I already discussed it. The items that are on the consent agenda will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. And please remember that we have removed 6, 7, 11, and 13. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Carroll and Wright?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Durwitz?
Aye.
Hes?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Our first resolution is number six. Is there a motion to discuss 24, 25 employee handbook changes? So moved.
Second. Carroll and Durwitz?
Yes.
And thank you, Sabrina, for coming up front to help us answer any questions during this discussion.
Absolutely. Who would like to start off with any questions that someone has? Who pulled it?
I can, I can start. That's right. As I've stated before, we do a board self-evaluation, and one of the things we evaluate ourselves on is making sure that our employees are involved in discussions on revising the employee handbook. And, in the listening session that preceded this meeting, we had some conversation regarding that and laid some plans, I believe, for making sure that we have the employee groups involved in the conversation, both providing input and then reacting to the document. So, I'm satisfied that that will happen moving forward. I think there was some, I know there was some concern from some of the emails that board members received about the wording of a session, a section in here on the concept of at-will. And I understand the value of the handbook from lots of standpoints, and one of those is to be able to convey in a condensed version what's in board policy. But I do wonder if there's a better way to phrase the at-will piece in here that is... here that is, is more compatible with our, supporting our staff and being empathetic to, to them. That's all I have to say. I can't find that in here anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I think, so I think we had a conversation about this, and I think my concern is with the grievance procedure and the, the five days issue. I, I understand that, I understand that the policy does say five days, and so what we are attempting to do here is to correct the handbook to match the policy. Though I do struggle with the concept of five days. I think about a grievance, and, you know, that is an employee coming to us saying they have a struggle, they want to continue to stay with us, but let's, let's talk about this and let's try to resolve it. And I feel like, that that becomes a very stressful situation for the employee, and to ask them to, to do this within five days is, in my mind, very challenging, and especially because I believe sometimes when it comes to grievances, that they have the right to go seek counsel, and sometimes it's very beneficial to have counsel help you in terms of writing up the grievance and doing that. And I've got a number of friends that, that when I got elected, the first thing they said was, "Tim, try to find ways that are, that are attorneys. Find ways to make more attorneys." And I'm like, "That's not what we're doing here." But it is this concept of, there are so few attorneys, and I go, "Well, to have somebody try to go out and seek counsel five days is just not enough," in my mind. And so my hope is that, you know, I, I will support this tonight because it's changing, but my hope is that we can go to, to policy and governance and, and maybe think about this. You know, like, the state of Wisconsin, my being a state employee, I know we have 14 calendar days, which equates to 10 days. Everything that I've looked at seems like 10 days is reasonable. So I, I feel like that's where we should go, and that that says to the employees, "We're going to give you a reasonable amount of time." But I feel like you want to encourage this to make sure that you're not going back, you know, I, I get if it's 90 days later, you can't go back and figure out what really happened. But 10 days seems to me like something reasonable. So I would, I would encourage us to go back and try to change both simultaneously and correct things. That would be my hope. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
So to give a little bit of background information, as you know, we bring out our handbook changes to the board once a year. So throughout that year, what I do is I track and document all of the questions that I receive from employees, from our meetings with our employee groups, and then also the policy changes that happen throughout the year. So a lot of these are really, like Dr. Hess shared, is to now take in and align to our policy. So for Shirley, I, I have documented and I wrote it down to have the conversation that right now, what I'm asking for, what we're asking for is to, to approve that our policy and our, and our handbook do align at this time, and that I would bring it back to the next policy and governance meeting to have and continue the conversation.
I think that's good.
Okay. Everyone okay? Call the roll.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
S?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Sounds like a good discussion. And number seven, student academic standards requirement assessment update. Motion?
So moved.
Second, Herzog.
Carolyn and Herzog?
Yes. Discussion. Dr. Herzog?
I'd ask that this one be pulled for a couple of reasons. First of all, each school board in the state of Wisconsin has a responsibility to approve student academic standards on an annual basis, and I believe that that has to be done in the month of July, or by the month of July. And secondly, I want to commend Dr. Coleman and those math and literacy staff in particular who have worked with him this year, to not only take a look at those standards that were approved last year and which are similar to the ones that we will be approving tonight, and recognizing that we needed to make sure that the teachers had the appropriate resources and that curriculum materials have to be updated on a regular basis, and to identify a new math program at the elementary level called Bridges, and to adopt a new middle school math program will allow those materials to be in alignment so that when professional development is done with the students, with the staff on behalf of the students, we should expect to see gains in student learning. No matter who we are and what situation we find ourselves, if we have to go through a driver's test, we like to know what we're being tested on and what's expected of us. And this, this is similar in terms of what our students are expected to learn and what our teachers are expected to teach. That still allows room for teachers to view teaching as both an art and a science, and to inject their, their personal ways of doing things into the instruction, just so that at the end, that all the students have had the opportunity to learn what is expected at that grade level, so that as they move through the system, they can progress, especially in the areas of literacy and math, and go on to higher level learning. So I just want to thank Dr. Coleman and the, the math and literacy coaches and directors and all the staff who worked with him on those adoptions, in addition to the ones in reading that were, or literacy that were also done. So I know he's a, a strong proponent of our district being a leader in the state in math and literacy, and I think having the appropriate instructional materials adopted by the board in alignment with these standards will, will get us there. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
S?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Number 11, purchase of 725 South Park Avenue property. Motion? So moved.
Second.
Carolyn, Wright?
Discussion. Questions? Dr. Hess.
So I believe I, Mr. Nihans, I asked the question, and I'm going to follow up and see if you can tell the public, is this, the intent of this is to pay for this through Fund 10?
Correct.
Is that what we're funding on doing? I mean, my struggle is with this, that there is a commission to this, a 5% commission, and by reading the, the offer to purchase and the buyer's agency agreement, that, that 5% is above and beyond. And then we're going to raise this, that is probably going to be 15,000, somewhere on the order of that, maybe, plus.
Yeah, I would, I would guess in the 20, $20,000 range.
Okay. So, I mean, this is, we're talking a quarter of a million dollars here. And my struggle is, you know, that I believe that we're doing this with the intent to kind of clear out the area around South Park, in hopes that it provides room for, if Phase Two of the referendum passes, but I struggle with, if that doesn't pass, I don't believe a government entity should be land banking, so I don't like that. We need to, to make this work, there are five other properties that we're going to need to purchase, and if I look at what we're paying here, a quarter of a million dollars to do everything with this, you know, I'm, I'm struggling with that. If we do five other properties and it comes out to be the same, that's 1.5 million. In this, we're saying it's coming from Fund 10, but the report says that we don't have it in the budget yet. And so I struggle with that. I struggle with that, especially after, two weeks ago, we said, "Hey, we had to cut 20 positions to save 1.1 million," because that wasn't in the budget. And I, I think I brought this up at the time, that this was kind of part of my thinking is, "Hey, here's something, we're, we're spending things." I struggle with quite substantially the $235,000 purchase price, and that, there's many reasons why I struggle with it. First, is because apparently the valuation has been suggested to us that it is appropriate because of our real estate agent. And I go, one, a real estate agent is not licensed to provide valuation. That is an assessor or an appraiser who is licensed to provide us valuation. And so in my mind, the taxpayer doesn't understand what the value of that property is, and yet we're just going to buy it. Now, I went to the assessor, and the assessor has gone and done revaluations, and the assessor says that the value of this property is $175,700. So that is, we are paying $59,000 more than what this thing is valued at, or that we're paying a 33% increase above and beyond what this thing is valued at. Then we were given comparables, and we got all these comparables here, and here's my biggest concern, is that this, to me, represents my biggest problem that I have seen coming from our district, and that is that we claim to be a data-driven school district, and I would love for that to be exactly the case, but there is, can be a distinction. Ideally, when you do data-driven analysis, it is you use data to inform your decision and then make the decision. But what I see often happening is, we make a decision and then we go find data to try to justify it. And that is very, a subtle difference, but some distinction really needs to be made there. In the first approach, you've got an epistemological reason to believe that our decision-making process is right and correct, and we're doing things the way it's supposed to be done. The other approach can lead us to nowhere. And so here's my concern. When I look at these comparables that we got, the offer to purchase was made on June 10th, this was brought to facilities and finance on June 14th, I brought up the valuation then, and then we get all these comparables here. But if you look at these reports, these comparables were created on June 19th. So that was substantially after the fact, and I presume that the real estate agent gave this to us, and, okay, that's fine and good. I'm getting old, and I have to now, I've got my progressive lenses on here because I got to read the small print in here. I look at these comparables, and where I struggle is this, that I look at this first one, and it says, "A totally renovated home. It was completely gutted, rewired, insulated, new windows, furnace, water heater, laundry hookups. Everything in this thing is basically brand-new." I looked at the city property records and the purchase, or the property that we're buying has had no building permits pulled, so that's not comparable at all. This next one, beautifully remodeled, kitchen and bathroom have been totally remodeled, new appliances, quartz countertops, new roof, new windows, new plumbing, plus water lines. This isn't comparable. None of these are comparable. So the concept that $235,000 is reasonable to pay, in my mind, is just kind of crazy. And that we're doing this after we just got rid of 20 positions, and we're looking to spend 1.5 million to clear this out. This is utterly crazy in my mind. The other problem that I have with this is that we've got a real estate agent that is making a 5% commission. If she's making a 5% commission, she shouldn't be the one telling us what the value is. To me, there's a conflict there. And so in my mind, if we claim that we want transparency, I think we need to substantially change our process for acquiring real property. And that would mean to me that we would always have an appraisal done on anything, so that the taxpayer understands what the real value is and what we're going to turn around and pay. And I also believe, similar to what we did in terms of the, the banking information or our, our banking provider, that if we're going to have a real estate agent do this stuff, that should be up to competitive bid too. That recently, the Supreme Court had a ruling about real estate agents and commissions, and one of the, the things that they thought was going to happen is that a buyer's agency representation would substantially come down in rate. So I believe there's reason for us, no, I, I think our agency goes through December or through January of next year, so we've got her, and I'm not saying at all that she's done anything bad for us or anything but a, a reasonable job, but I do believe we have to allow everybody to compete on this to potentially save taxpayers some dollars in doing this. So I am not happy with this. I am not happy with spending this amount of money that isn't in the budget. When we just said to our staff, "We have to do a reduction," it was painful two weeks ago, and yet this, to me, looks like we are prioritizing building over our staff, and I just, I don't like that. So for that reason, I can't support this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nihans, do you have a rebuttal or anything that you would like to add?
I'm really here if you have questions.
Okay.
I'll let my staff report. Stan?
Thank you.
So we have talked about what we would do with some of the, the properties around South Park if, in the event that a referendum failed. For example, I think we talked about potentially using that area for additional parking, because South Park has, does not have enough parking for staff. Or we would use it to maybe like, provide more space for a pickup and drop-off area because that, where, the current situation is very dangerous for students because it's so congested. I mean, it's not dangerous, we're not putting our kids in harm's way, but we should be able to control traffic in that area better. And we have already, can you tell me how many houses we've purchased already?
I believe for properties.
And are they all about the same price range?
They've ranged from 160,000, off the top of my head, somewhere around 160,000 to 250,000. There's been a range.
And part of the reason we're doing this is to avoid what happened with Merrill, right? Where there's that one house that didn't sell, we're, we're hoping to get ahead of it, am I right?
We, we were correct. I mean, my understanding, as the district prepared for Phase One, my predecessor had done similar, similar kinds of activities, trying to proactively purchase property where we know our site's going to be. I guess as we've looked at it, in the, in the conversations I've been involved in, there's never been a second site location for a potential new middle school on the south side, other than the current South Park property. There is no property available that I'm aware of, and if there was, it'd be in the eight to 10 million range, based on properties of acreage that we'd be looking at. I'm not sure where, other than the South Car- Park current site, we'd look at, so the thought was to expand what we can, if we can purchase property, and do it proactively.
Yeah.
A downfall of waiting, if you want to do it outside of Fund 10, you could potentially put it on a referendum, but now you have about a four-month window to buy property and close on them, because the design process is already starting at that point. And with the properties at Vell, we had, so the referendum passed in November, we had until February to make an ultimate decision on that property before, it was too far for design to change design without it having a significant impact on what that design's going to cost then. So you're looking at a very, very tight window to try to now negotiate or purchase properties pretty much cold at that point. So the board had chosen a couple years ago to proactively try to go at this instead of trying to be last-minute reactive.
Right. And I think actually we used a key word, and that key word is proactive. Our long-range facilities plan is proactive. We need to start planning and sunsetting some of our buildings. It's a sound plan, it's a good plan, and like we said before, even if we do not pass the referendum, that space in that area is desperately needed for the students, for the teachers. I guess looking at, I can see how Dr. Hess might not understand our long-range facilities plans, and he's, you know, three months into his position, but I do believe that purchasing that property is what we need to do to be proactive with our long-range facilities plan. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mrs. Dewitt?
Thank you. Two weeks ago, so, two weeks ago, we sat here, and I believe that I was one of the only ones who made mention of, that I believed that we would be only ones who made mention of, that I believed that we would be able to find funding to keep the 20 positions that were eliminated. And hearing that the purchase of this property is in fact coming from Fund 10 infuriates me a little bit, as it should many. I struggle with this, and I would echo a lot of what Dr. Hess had said. My number-one issue here and concern is, and I would like to ask where are our priorities? I know that Dr. Hess had said that, and I think a quarter of a million dollars for one property is insane. We're counting on a referendum that we don't know is going to pass. While I understand and hear that there are other usages for this property, I, at this time, I will not be voting in favor of this. I can't do it. I think we're, I just can't. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No. It's over.
Call the roll, please.
Dewitt.
No.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Nope.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye. Carolyn.
Resolution carries.
Okay, one more to go. Number 13, Title IX Policy Updates. Motion, please, for discussion.
So moved. Herzog.
Second. Dewitt.
Okay. Kelly, you pulled this one. Did you have some questions on it?
Yeah. I apologize that I didn't get a chance to give you a call or send you an email with my questions here. I think they're pretty straightforward and pretty simple. I guess, I know that this was brought to Policy and Governance, and there was a lot of information that was provided that day, so sometimes after the fact, when you're presented with something, you start to then think of questions that maybe should have been asked during that meeting, so I apologize that my brain wasn't working fast enough to come up with those. I did spend some time looking into this a little bit further, and I have some concerns. Well, first off, I guess I'll start out with a pretty straightforward question. If this isn't adopted, what happens? Like, if we say we didn't pass this, what happens? What are the repercussions, if any?
Well, I do know that it is a regulation that is being proposed, and we are to be compliant, have it in effect by August 1st, the new regulations for Title IX.
And I guess that's my question, what happens if we aren't compliant?
I know that's a question that I have asked. I guess I've never dealt with something that's come forward as a regulation, or it goes through for approval, that it's not approved. So that would be something new to me, and I'd have to look into what that means, but I for surely can do that.
Thank you. And then, my second question would be, from my understanding, this doesn't really change the current policy that we have in place, is that correct? Like, I guess what is, what does this change? What, I understand that, you know, we're now getting the, what is it, a Title IX coordinator, and there's some factors that...
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of changes that came through with the regulations. I know that when I brought this to Policy and Governance, I put a memo together, kind of just giving an overview of some of the more major changes. It does articulate what the coordinator is, the decision-maker, the appeal decision-maker, but it broadly defines our definitions. It also gives a broader scope, and what I mean by that is, currently, what we do is we, if we receive complaints, written complaint of things that happen in our programs, in our buildings, we would be required to act. The broader scope to this now is, it could be things that happen out of our buildings, out of our programs, field trips that could happen over the weekend, on social media, and if it's brought into our buildings where it could cause a hostile environment, we for surely would need to look into.
I just want to make note that I did read all of these changes. I feel that it's important for the community and everybody, if anybody is watching the 10 people, I think we said, that they...
Probably six now.
That they understand.
No, absolutely.
So that was more of a question for the community, not myself. I did read all of that. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Dr. Hess.
I, I don't have any questions. I talked to both of you today and yesterday, and I appreciate you answering a whole bunch of things for me. So I got more comments, I'm going to explain myself tonight. You know, the Title IX law is just slightly older than me, so that's been around for a while. And then 30 years ago, part of what my rationale is, 30 years ago, I remember sitting at UWO being a freshman and taking the US Politics and Government course, and I remember the professor driving into us the fact that it is Congress that is responsible for creating or defining laws. And in this particular case, I feel like what we are being asked to do here is more the executive branch of the federal government imposing upon us, and I struggle with that, and I struggle with that substantially. And I think Sabrina, you had shared with me today, that we already have a policy in place that kind of, many of the definitions of what the rules that the Department of Education is putting upon us here, we already have those protections in place, not as part of Title IX, but in terms of, I think the policy is 2260, that is dealing with discrimination or anti-harassment. And so many of those definitions, we already have in place. And so, my estimation is that all the administrators, everyone in this room, we welcome all the classes that are defined in this new Title IX rewrite, and that we're here to protect all the students that we come here. We invite them all here, and we want everybody here, and we are going to protect anyone from any harassment or discrimination to the extent that we can. And so what I struggle with is, what is this going to do other than now officially put it under the Title IX portion of things? And, so from a practical standpoint, I believe the protections are there, but now we are increasing our potential, increasing the potential possibility of litigation, and I don't know why that we would do this. And so I look at this, and I say, I see this as the executive branch of the federal government trying to rewrite existing law through rulemaking by using a bureaucratic office of the Department of Education, and that they are doing so under the threat of removing federal aid. But I went and researched, and to the best that I understand, there has been no educational institution that has lost any federal aid because of any violation of a Title IX sort of issue. So I kind of feel like that's almost a veiled threat. And so, I appreciate that probably other presidents, in modern times, I believe every president has probably attempted to redefine rules or laws through these sorts of processes. But my struggle is, I have never been a publicly elected official and asked to vote on something where this has come up. And I believe that when we define laws, it should be defined through Congress, not through creative rule-writing through a bureaucratic office. And so, to that extent, I'm going to have to say no to this one. I believe we are inviting everyone, we want to protect everyone, but I just can't get behind the federal government trying to impose something on us. And so, in this case, I'm voting no. So, thank you.
Call the roll.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Nope.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
No.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Dewitt.
No.
We have a tie. What happens when we have a tie?
I don't know. We've got to go to the rules.
We have to have a two-thirds vote, so we had to have four votes.
Yeah, it had to be...
Yep.
Okay. Request for future agenda items.
I have one.
Mrs. Carolyn.
Um, let's see, hold on, I need to find my notes. Okay, so, bear with me for a second. So Policy 0172 is a policy related to legal counsel, and I would like to suggest that we send, have, send or review that policy in the policy committee and consider including language on how to select and review legal counsel. I would like to send a question to Facilities and Finance regarding an estimate for our legal fees annually, if it's possible. I'd like to know if the school district has ever evaluated the performance of legal counsel, and when the last time we issued an RFP for legal services. Going into my ninth year, I cannot recall a time when we have evaluated our legal services or reviewed them, so I think that per board policy, we should kind of do that. I did contact WASB to get some insight on how other districts do it, and I have two documents that I'm going to ask Sherry to forward to the board to do. Is there anything else I wanted to add? Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any announcements? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely.
And similarly, I would, what I brought up before, I would hope that it is Policy 3340, that maybe we look at the prospect of changing the grievance timeframe from five to 10 days.
Yeah, good. Ms. Wyman.
Yeah.
I apologize, I forgot the last comment I had. The reason I'm doing this is because I think there could be a cost savings associated with selecting different attorneys from time to time, much like we do with banking, or much like we do with health insurance. Thank you.
And possible realtor.
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be, I'm not as familiar...
Five days to 10 days.
I'm not as familiar with who I all have to go through, but I would like to explore the grievance issue, I'd like to explore the realtor, and potentially explore, are there other things that we believe should happen when we acquire real property? And so, I'm kind of looking at like an appraisal, I believe that's something that we should do. So I'm assuming that's Facilities and Finance and Policy, but I...
Yes.
I don't know for sure.
Yes. We'll get it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We will now be adjourning to executive sess...
For order.
Yes?
Do we have the announcements?
Oh. No announcements. Okay, we're going to be adjourning to executive session, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee. Is there a motion?
So, second.
Okay. Dewitt. Carolyn. Call the roll, please.
Hess.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Hi.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Herzog. Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.